The first order of business is to approve the meeting notes for the supervisor's meeting of August 20. I'm going to have seen these and some comments. Three, none? I have a motion. Do you have any good work to add?
I'll move it through.
Okay, now second it. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Yes.
None of us have had a chance to look at the minutes. They're not on the website.
Well, they were on the website up until two days ago. I had to take them down and I'm going to explain that reason in a minute.
Okay.
The supervisors don't even know why I had to take them down.
Can we?
So, it was illegal to not have taken them down.
Okay, well, no, Your Honor, for the importance, go ahead, please.
Well, last month, the supervisors made a motion to authorize the township's solicitor to enforce the development agreement for the Penns Nana. And it means Gemcraft in the minutes. Gemcraft notified our attorney, that is Harkins, who is the same as Gemcraft, but their attorney notified our attorney with David Sueins. You know, take the minutes off the website and have them corrected to say Harkins. So, I had the minutes renewed and we have to correct them to say Harkins because technically, the development agreement does say Harkins, even though they are now Gemcraft. Harkins is part of Gemcraft.
I need a motion for us.
I do.
I will make that motion after we've discussed the name.
Could we, if we're to discuss this, certainly we should make it correct, but why can't we make it Harkins in division of Gemcraft? Does this so it's a little bit clearer?
We can, if we'd like to do that. They stated by that is that they do not want the name Gemcraft upgraded.
But if it's... It'd be nice if they would do the job so we have an excuse.
Why don't we approve it?
Forgive me for speaking out.
Well, we can say that because that's exactly the correct. It is Harkins, a division of Gemcraft.
Then that's what it should say.
Mm-hmm.
Irrespective of what Harkins or Gemcraft want.
Can we, if you want us to speak, would you raise your hand, please?
I'm sorry, sir, yes.
And identify yourself, please.
Lou Alfano. I live over in Victoria Gardens. And as I said, if the legal name is Harkins, a division of Gemcraft, then that should be reflected in the minutes. Gemcraft's name should be there.
I will amend my motion to make it that language, subject to Adam's approval. I think, do I hear a second to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I apologize if they were taken down. They were up there for a couple of weeks. I, just last week, I took them down.
It's a technical for that to be done. It hasn't changed the direction of the previous.
Right, right. I wanted to let you know that on the website is the soliciting ordinance. It's been amended because, as I stated in the last couple of meetings, we have to permit solicitors in the township. We can now require that they are licensed by the state and they must register with the township office. So, the ordinance has been amended. The supervisors have read it and it's on the website and it'll be at the meeting next month to be adopted.
Solicitors?
So, I didn't know if anybody had any questions on soliciting this month. That's the name change. It used to be that we banned all soliciting in the townships when we found out we weren't allowed to do that. But for those of you that weren't here last month, I did state last month that if you live on a private road, you can put at the entrance to your private road a no soliciting sign and if they enter, then you can call the police and get their information and they can be cited. If you live on a public road, you can put a sign at the entrance to your driveway and then they are not allowed to enter your property. Every year, I'm required to report to the supervisors by the end of October what the minimum obligation cost is going to be for the pension plan for the township employees. This is a pension plan that the township pays the cost upfront, which for 2013, it's going to be about $50,000. The state then reimburses the township. So, the township will end up paying about $20,000. For example, this year, it cost us $45 and we just got a check for $25. So, they don't have to make a motion, but I'm required to let them know that. And I have informed them in writing. I wanted to let you know that we are still working heavily on property violations. We receive probably three complaints a day. People have come in to fill out the forms. And it's been averaging about three a day. And I mean to give it to whichever department needs to handle it, whether it's the road crew, the zoning building. And right now, we have one that we're working on, which I'm sure you're all aware of, that the house across from the entrance to Walmart, it's right near Victoria Gardens. The house is in East Marlborough Township, but part of the property is in Kennet Township. So, we're trying to determine who's going to enforce the house. The house needs to be torn down. So, we're trying to work with East Marlborough Township to get it resolved.
Joe Duffy. Lisa, this is about the pension plan, the pension addition. In addition to the employees having this pension plan, are there other retirement benefits provided?
There is for the city of Yarra. Yep, yes.
And can these matching funds?
Yes.
And can you explain that one?
The employees are now to contribute up to 6% of their salary and the township matches up to 3%.
Thank you.
And last point, as we discussed about our building inspector. We are now, we hired a third-party company. Our building inspector is no longer working for the township. We hired a third-party company, just in the interim, to do our building inspector. And then we are advertising to get quotes from other third-party companies. The supervisors have decided right now they are going to stick with a third-party company, part-time, instead of having a full-time building inspector.
Can you name that company?
Right now, it's Keystone Municipal Services.
Under Old Business, we discussed the issue that was brought up before the last meeting and prior to that about continuing work sessions as we have had them in the past. They were on a single afternoon basis. We tried later in the afternoon. Attendance was minimum. We put out a request for people's comments and we have had two written comments. Both of them are quite good. And there were various suggestions. And the one that we feel that is the first one we will try, and it's not the only one we will try, but we'll try this for a period of time, and that is to have an open work session, non-binding work session. It will be one hour before the planning commission meeting, which means that it will start at 6 o'clock on the first Tuesday of the month. And we'll see how that goes. If that works, fine. If it doesn't, that will come into my next order of business under new business. We will turn it over to the get-to-be formed, which is going to happen shortly, communications committee to see if they have other ideas that can work. Perhaps they'll be able to get more input from just the people who did respond.
Mike, I'd like, before you change the subject, I'd like to clarify the record. We had two written statements about the work sessions and those were very helpful. There was also a poll taken. And of those people that were polled, over 25%, I don't remember the numbers, at least 25%, could have been a lot more than that, were in favor of an evening work session. There was following that because you wanted more input. There was a petition that was circulated to the community and there were, as I recall, 190 names signed in favor of having evening work sessions. And that was presented to the board supervisors last month. And I believe there is another petition that's also been circulated. I heard of that. Does anybody else have that other petition? So, there's another petition asking for the same thing. So, it would be inappropriate to say that the only input was two letters. There has been a continual outcry for the last several months about this, strongly stated coming from the community. And I think that that voice needs to be recognized and honored.
I want to address that petition.
It was scheduled to be the night before the PC meeting and many people in this room would attend that. So, I don't think it was appropriate for us to spend two nights in a row. That petition was very specific about when I should be, so that's why I would not have favor for that.
Okay, well, that's what, Scott, pending anything further. We do need to make a decision on this because I don't want to carry this over to next month and then months beyond and beyond and beyond, and we'll get nowhere. So, we're going to make the decision that it's going to be there and we're going to try it.
No, we certainly agree on that.
Okay, that's...
I'd like to have Bill McGlocklin's petitions presented because people in the community went out and on their own, they had to do the signatures. And I think we need to, whether we've made the decision or not, I think we should receive it and honor it. That's what we are all about, is hearing what our constituents want.
Fine. And before you come up, Bill, just a second please. I intend to accept all of those petitions. But what my plan is at the moment, since we're going to, at the next order of business, reconstitute the communications committee, those petitions will go to the communications committee for their attention and I'm going to be looking to them to come forward with another recommendation. So, let's, Bill, if you want to bring them up, that's fine. Go ahead.
While the petition does say the, if you're interested in a second or in a work session, a second, at a second meeting on another Monday night in the month, please sign here. So, here's another 48 signatures. That brings the total up over 150. And I think we can disregard the fact that it says a second Monday night. This just shows that there's interest in a work session.
Sure.
So, will the first work session be October 2nd?
Yes.
Which is the first to be October?
That's correct. Will be. Depending, we, if the committee forms, which is the next order of business. Bill, go ahead. Go ahead, Bill.
So, a lot of us are glad to see you're going back again and reinstituting the workshop sessions. 6 o'clock is an unusual time because it's dinner time for a lot of us who will come to an early planning commission meeting. I'd like to point out that this trial does not work. I'd like you to consider, there are two Monday nights that are unused. The first Monday in the month and the, is it second or third?
I just addressed the first Monday, the day before the verse 2 PC meeting. And asking us to spend four or five hours, two nights in a row is not very acceptable.
Yeah, there's another Monday night also available.
I'm addressing the one you mentioned.
Well, there are two Monday nights available. To have the list of some places.
Yeah, Chris Burkett, Williams Lane. I think it's a great idea to have it before the planning commission to perhaps capture some of that audience for planning commission matters, which are come before this board routinely. Give them a little bit of insight in some of the things that planning commission is taking under their consideration. So, I think it's a great idea to give it a trial and see how it works. I mean, it's not going to work 100% for everybody, but I think it's a very good first effort.
Thank you, Chris. Now, I'm going to go ahead and go to the next order of business and that is to report on the requests that I made to the audience to have anybody who wants to serve on the new communications committee to get in touch. And I had four people respond. And I would like to appoint those four people to the new communications committee. Kathy Burkett, Bob Blisterman, Bill McGlocklin, and Bill Spalding. And I'm going to ask all four of those people if they would wait till after the meeting because at that time, since they don't have a chairman, I will call the committee to order and ask for a vote for them to appoint a chairman of that. We would prefer them to do that.
Do we have to reenact it from the beginning?
I don't think we do.
Well, I wanted to say, well, it's not. The supervisors discussed the communications committee which used to be in effect and it hasn't been for a long time and they all three agreed to reenact it. So, they're going to reenact it tonight and then they'll vote for people.
All right, I'll move to reenact the communications committee. And I want to add a statement to their mission that we add an electronic newsletter to their mission.
I take them there. Is there any questions or comments?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the need at this point to expand the basic role to have a communications committee. I'm all in favor of communications committee. I'm concerned about what, if the committee comes forward and recommends an electronic newsletter, then I would, I would feel stronger in favor of. But I am concerned about our projecting the role onto them. Are we going to, we already do a newsletter for the township. I'm concerned that we're taking on a responsibility that is going to require some considerable editorial effort. And I don't know who's going to be supervising that. My concern, my understanding in the past with the communications committee was that there wasn't that much to keep them busy. So, this may keep them all busy, but I don't know that we're going to have people who want to be doing the editorial work for a newsletter on a regular basis.
Well, I appreciate your concern and I'm sure that's going to be a concern of the members of the communications committee. But let's let them sort that out. As with any committee of the township, the chair reports to the board of supervisors. On a working basis, as we do allocate work areas among weekly supervisors, the communications committee I will oversee. Which doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to do it in any direction, but if they have a problem that needs a simple answer, they'll probably come to me. If they have a recommendation, they might bring it to me. And if I see that it's something that the board of supervisors needs to address, that's, they're with the board of supervisors.
I can read to you what the old communications committee's mission is, if anybody's ever been hearing.
Before you do, can I ask just for clarification of the motion? Does the motion say with the instruction to do a newsletter or that's an option that could be done?
All of the motion is going to say that you guys moved to reenact the communications committee. All right?
Okay, that's fine. Correct. Then I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay. The mission, and this is off the website. It was to facilitate communication between township government and township residents, instructing and maintaining a website, which we have somebody maintain it. I'm hoping that they can offer suggestions and upgrades to the website. Being part of the newsletter, educating new residents about the township through information packets, which is currently being done by the staff. Provide electronic notifications to township residents by request of scheduled meetings and events.
All right, Joe?
Yes, you mentioned earlier that, something about the work session, that the communications committee would bring suggestions to you?
To the board of supervisors, certainly.
For the work session?
Sure.
Is, are you saying that, I'm trying, I'm a little confused about the parameters. So, does everything go through the communications committee to you?
He was just saying that if there were other ideas from them on when they could have work sessions or what they see would be best for the work sessions.
I would like to portray them very, very formally as the eyes and ears of the community, not just the board of supervisors, but the community. So, they can facilitate communications of ideas, concerns, et cetera, through them if they are the conduit and they're not the only conduit, Joe. Every one of us in this room is a conduit. But bringing a little bit of formalization to the process is the communications committee.
To stay with that idea from a moment ago, communications is one thing. I think that any information that is facilitated by communication is very good. But I would think the question of work session is a more technical and is not a communications issue. It could be bolstered and supported, like the petitions were in effort at communication. But if you're suggesting that the communications committee should be responsible for work sessions or for communications...
No, Scott, I never said that and I don't want to head that.
Okay, so, that's what I'm trying to understand.
And you understand that I should not have implied that. And I do not. One more.
Thank you, Phil.
Go ahead.
Lou Alfano again.
Go ahead, Lou.
This whole business of the communications committee talks about electronic communication.
One aspect of it.
Ah, well, that was the big, that seemed to be the thrust of it. And based on that, now, yes, I have internet. I could get it. But I know there are lots and lots of people within the township who do not have internet and who therefore would have no means of receiving this information. I wish I had a viable suggestion for how to get to them.
You do, and if you find one, let me know.
But I felt it should be brought up just as a point of interest.
Good, okay. Just a quickie on the work sessions. I'm going to assume that they will be conducted like the afternoon work sessions in that there'll be an agenda. And I think the agenda is easy to put because we look at old business and what the statuses are. And secondly, there'll be minutes on the work sessions.
I would think they would be the same as they were.
At the moment, I don't see that.
That's what I'm suggesting, that they're the same as they were. Agenda and minutes.
Okay. Your point is well stated. Okay, let's move on and now we're going to come to roadwork. And this is the period of time from August 20 to September 17 today. paving for 2012 was finished this month.
Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are we done with Old Business? Because I have an Old Business question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We...
Sorry, that was prior to the meeting topic subject. You're going back to, you know, to Old Business?
Yeah, I am. Sorry. I'm looking at the earlier draft of the...
Well, we got to pay attention to this.
I got to eat my piece of paper. That work you're doing. I was, I wanted to find out if you had any further input on the map restoration and if anything was discussed about the acid in the paperwork.
Two things. I'll take one first. Yes, we have concluded that we're going to go ahead with the proposal from the restoration company. And as of today, I believe we have consummated the contract and...
Well, you guys agreed to that a couple of months ago.
That's correct, we did.
Based on your concerns about the acid.
That has been resolved very clearly. And it came in rereading the proposal from the restoration organization. Quite clear in there that that preservation will be followed.
And that will include you with the acid. Did we ever get a proposal from...
We received two other proposals.
We had two others.
That were higher.
And so, who was it that made the decision we're doing this and what are the prices?
Well, the prices are the same as they were before you saw the proposal and we went over the numbers. And although one of the numbers is in flux because they don't know how much it's going to cost when they finally finish what they call the treatment, the approximate number is a little above $8,000.
Which is what you guys agreed to...
That's correct.
And we'll have to go back to the minutes.
Did we receive a bid from Winter Jewelry?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
And that, that was above $9,000. And then there was one other one, which I forget the name of it right now.
Okay. Let's go back to roadwork, please.
Are you done?
Scott, thank you. Paving for 2012 has been finished. Shoulders have billings added after the new surface has been set for a few days. The material for the shoulders was part of the old road, which is taken up and ground and set aside. New surface is put on. And the billings, which still contain some binder, are put back on the sides. And we have a good deal of that left over because there's clearly more material that comes off of the road. Line painting is complete. Not quite. It's not quite. Our regularly, regular paintings were done, that is scribing, along with intersection markings, stop bars and turn arrows. There's still a little bit to be done also on stop bars. Yes. Some of the new roads have been done. The yard waste pile was ground up from mulch and pulled away by Weaver Mulch. This pile was a year's worth of yard waste and it took two and a half days for them to grind up the entire pile. This is a great benefit for us because we don't have to have, pay any money to have it ground up and they will take all yard waste that's put there. There's certain restrictions on the kind of yard waste, but it's usually trees and limbs and that sort of thing. Starting in October, PICO will be running a new high-pressure gas main from Woodward Woodview Drive on Rosedale to Norway Road and Hillendale Road. This is an extension of an existing main comprised of states. Inlet repair was done in several spots in the township. New pipes and inlets were replaced on Newark Road and Channel Mill Road. All those were paved afterwards. Traffic control was provided for an accident on Kalin Road by our police force. Also, accident control, traffic control around accidents is something that our road crew responds to ridiculously. And I think Roger will tell us about an accident on Route 52, which took the road, most of the road crew, three or four hours to accommodate. And that's just time out, time away from doing the roadwork that's required of the township. New signs were installed on East Hillendale Road between Byard and Rosedale Roads. This was done at the time of when we upgraded those roads. All those new signs, incidentally, have new high reflectivity to meet new standards. New thermoplastic stop bars have been added on Norway and will be put on Center Mill Road and Spring Mill Road. Thermoplastic bars replace the paint that's usually used, which may last oh, two years. Thermoplastic will last a minimum of five years and sometimes you can get seven or eight out of it. It depends upon the sunlight on it and other, and traffic. The last mowing of 2,010 is started today and it will take about two weeks. Any comments? Um, let's see.
We have two resolutions for road dedication. The first resolution's for the development Carlton, north and south. This includes road dedications of Carlton Drive, Bowling Drive, Mark Drive, and Port... and portions of Spring Mill and Norway Roads. The developer has completed all the roads. Our roadmaster and our engineer have signed off on the roads. And I have the deed of dedication for the supervisors to sign and a resolution which accepts the deed and conveys, under Kenton Township, the roadbeds of all the roads that I mentioned for the subdivision plan for Blanchett Track slash Carlton North and South, prepared by E.B. Walsh and Associates dated 7/16/2003. And then there is an attachment which has the layout of the roads in the resolution. The developer was required to put up an 18-month maintenance bond. There, I'll mention that there was a slight issue with the roads. When the developer paved the roads, it wasn't perfectly smooth. So if some of the residents were upset that the road had a few bumps in it, not major bumps, but enough that they could feel it. And unfortunately, our attorney has told us that it's a rideability issue. It's not a structural issue, so we have to accept the roads. You know, our roadmaster compared it to Norway Road, which is very smooth, but there's cars constantly driving on it, which helped with any bumps right after it's paved. But we're not quite sure exactly why it wasn't perfectly smooth.
I agree, there isn't a commercial.
Yeah. So I guess that you guys...
Do we want to do them together or one at a time?
We do want to...
No, builders always try to get away with something. Builders always try to get away with something.
Thank you. I move that we accept the letter of dedication for the Carlton North and South roads.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I move the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, they're all complete over there, aren't they?
Yes.
All their detention basements, everything?
Everything complete.
Maintenance agreement requires them not to foul, but to maintain the road as though it was made for 18 months.
No, the maintenance agreement is in case anything goes wrong with the road. They're not to touch the roads anymore. The township has to do everything for the road.
Yep.
Regarding the paving of Hillendale Road, driven on it seems very nice. My question is, was there any contribution to that very expensive paving by a commercial mushroom grower on that? That uses a lot of large trucks. Was there any contribution by them?
I'm not going to argue.
No.
Were they asked?
I was not part of asking them. I don't know if they were asked.
They were not asked.
Go ahead, please.
The next one's Penfield Road, which is also Kalen Road. This wasn't dedicated to the township by a developer. It's dedicated by the homeowners. They finished the road. The developer walked away from that. They took the money from the letter of credit, finished the road, and now offering it for dedication to the supervisors. So I have the same resolution, but it's offering dedication of Penfield Drive and a portion of Kalen Road.
Roger, are there any problems with that road that you saw?
No, it was inspected by our engineer and myself as a, as taken by the homeowner association. So they just didn't do it on their own. They called our...
I move that we accept the letter of dedication for Penfield.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next issue? Please, it's yours.
I know you can't see this. Well, maybe, John, could you shut the lights up a little bit? Maybe everybody can see where this is located. Anyway, this property is located here, Starve Gut Lane up here, Byard Road's over here, and Old Kenton Road's here. This is the case property. And they are subdividing, proposing a subdivision for three lots. This main property would remain, which is 29, almost 29 acres, and these three lots are over four acres each. They received preliminary approval from the Planning Commission on September 4th. The, I'm presenting this plan to the supervisors for preliminary approval and approval of the 29 waivers that were submitted with the plan from the Planning Commission. And they're mainly, the waivers are all listed on here. And they're mainly waivers from different sections of the ordinance that are not required for this type of plan, such as stormwater management, landscaping plan, lighting plan, and so on. The supervisors have seen them. The applicant does have the following conditions. They have to receive Cheshire County Health Department and DEP approval for the planning modules. They have to address the outstanding issues in Gilmore Association's letter dated August 28th. Address the outstanding issues from Ann Walters Land Safety Architect, if there are any remaining. And they will place a note on the plan stating that if there's any future construction or subdivision on these lots, the plans will be resubmitted to the township for review and approval. The applicant would sign the rules and regulations for site development, and the applicant would pay a fee in lieu of $27,000 based on $9,000 per unit of three units. Now, let me mention something about the fee. The applicant is currently considering putting in easement on this property here. So they're working, they just started the process to work with the supervisors, and if that occurs, then that fee will be waived. So I have to put it in the motion for now until... So this is the part that they, read the elements. The part that they want to put on an easement, is that landlocked once the three, should those three get developed? No. How do you get to it?
I can show you here.
Okay, see it?
Near front on the Old Kent Road. And they have an entrance off Starve Gut, is it?
Yes.
They have two entrances.
You can't landlock at all. Got it, okay. Thank you. Matt?
I just wanted to mention, I was part of the team that handled this application. And 29 waivers sounds like a lot, but I think originally there were over 40 requested. And the applicant actually submitted in writing a justification for each waiver after the engineer reviewed that he recommended approving 29 of them. So it's really whittled down from a much larger list. It's the nature of this application. It's a very large lot. The lots being subdivided are very large, and they're going to be used for single residences.
Could you have anything else?
Just the, we mentioned something about the land conservation panel that we're going to be in touch with about, meeting to talk about the area of easement.
The Land Conservancy Advisory Council met on Friday. I gave them all the information. They met on Friday, and one of the, two of the members are here. And they told me early in the weekend that they're going to contact you shortly to meet.
And an email has been sent to Chris.
Oh, okay.
I also was on that team, looking at this property. It's several years old now, isn't it?
He actually came back. He didn't do anything several years ago.
We started this on a cold winter day, and we walked the property. But anyway, one of the agreements for this property, which I think the audience ought to know, is that this is one of those protected visions from Old Kenton Road. And the agreement at that time was that the properties would be pushed back toward, what was it? Marley Mill? No, not Marley Mill. Byard, Byard Road.
There's two lots on, two lots on Byard, one on Old Kenton.
Yeah, but it would be pushed back behind a row of trees and that type of thing. So it wouldn't be ruining the vision, and they agreed that the owner, the developer, has agreed to that.
They've worked very well with the planning permission.
Yeah.
They've been very cooperative. So with that said, question, you may have mentioned this before. I'm sorry, here. Of these three lots, are they self-restricted from further subdivision? No.
Four acres.
They're four acres. Are they all, I'm sorry, what was it about the acreage of? They're all four acres, so technically can't subdivide them whether you know. They've been asked to put that note on the plan. Yeah, that's right. Thank you. So I'm asking if you guys would move to approve this?
I will so move. For a second.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Are there any comments? I move questions. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passing in any questions?
We have one request for an extension. Mine's to reach until October 17th. Can we move to approve that extension?
Aye, second to the extension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're done with our formal agenda except under public comment. Does anybody have any...
Can I raise two issues?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if it belongs in old business or not, but number one, I wanted to confirm that the supervisors are meeting with Tim Unbright on September 26th at 10:00 to review the '09 and '10 audits and the funds balances that were being considered. One was sewer, and then there was open fund, if I remember correctly. So that's September 26th at 10:00. And I'm assuming, assuming is not always best thing. I'd like to have this on the agenda for the October Board Supervisors Meeting and ask that Tim be here to present that as he did for 2011.
Well, see, I've seen that.
I'm sorry?
Boy, I've seen that next week to confirm with him.
Thank you. But we'll address it at the meeting. Okay, that's number one. The second one is, I understand that last week, the county report on Chandler Mill Bridge was supposed to have been delivered.
On Chandler Mill? I haven't seen that one yet.
That was my question. Does anything come by the township on that?
No.
The only, we received our bridge reports for Southridge and one other one, which I'm getting ready to route to all of you guys to look at.
They've carried a special study there, right?
Yeah.
For your information, the engineer, in the interim, that submitted the report to PennDOT doesn't necessarily mean that PennDOT has accepted it because that report has been submitted to PennDOT and it's gone back and forth a number of times. So I'm not sure that PennDOT has accepted it. But when they do, in due time, they will let us know, I hope.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comments? Phil?
Yes, Phil McLaughlin. I guess this should be directed to Lisa, and I'm going back to Penn's matter. With the legal issue you encountered, do I assume correctly then the builder is still not in default?
Well, the builder claims is not in default. They were out there just as recently as last week paving some driveways. So that's the first activity we've seen from them over, in over a year. They told our attorney they plan on paving the roads next year. They plan on finishing them.
Well, again, having a little experience in this area, does the builder agree with the punch list from Bob Johnson?
Yeah.
Okay.
However, like I said, we haven't seen any activity in over a year.
Thank you. Has that escrow been increased?
Yes.
For the delay?
Yes. Now unless...
Are there any other increases? Is there another increase due?
Yes, and they haven't done it yet.
So that would be a second 10 percent?
Yes, they haven't responded to anything the township has sent them in the past year. They finally responded to our attorney last week because we wanted to know what they were doing. And our roadmaster went and saw, or actually, Albert McCarthy went and saw they were paving. So I tried to call and get a hold of them, so our attorney called them and they responded.
So what happens on the escrow increase? Do you already have that money?
We, no, we don't have it yet.
So they have to give you the increase?
Well, the only increase they haven't done is for this year. Every other increase they did. So that's at the bank, but the increase for this year, they haven't addressed. And Bob said, you know, our attorney said that if we draw on the letter of credit, we can't force them to do the increase.
Any other comments? Greg?
Yes, under old business, what is the status of the writ to know lawsuit that Mr. Stevens filed against the township? Where does that stand right now?
Mr. Stevens didn't file a lawsuit against the township. The township filed a suit against me. They took an appeal to what the Commonwealth gave a word to me on. So that is...
So what is the status of it at this time?
The status is that township and Stevens are in negotiation, working out the final terms of a compromise settlement. I'm waiting for the final paperwork to review.
Who's preparing that?
And if we don't have it, if we don't even settle, then we're in trial in about two or three weeks.
And so follow-up question on that. What's the order of magnitude of dollars spent for a legal fee by the township in this matter?
I have to punt on that basis. Do you have a subject to add?
I would have to get back to you. I don't know, I don't want to quote off the top of my head.
I have an addition to what he was saying, and that is that there was a guess in the KTO newsletter that Mike objected to, and it was that the township, our money, had spent some $70,000. And I checked into it, and I wrote back to you saying, as far as I knew and could find out, it was a guess at best. And I asked if you would report the accurate number in the August for the supervisors meeting. Does that ever get checked?
No.
So we don't, we don't know how much of our money was spent defending this situation.
I'll find the answer. And report it to you.
My other question was concerning John Gatt, who I have a lot of respect for. He's been signed, is the contract signed now with John Gatt? Did we change any of the objectives of using him as a consultant? It was a pretty loose situation from what we first saw. Has it been refined in any way?
No, it has not, Bill. It was purposely loose because what he is going to do is take either 10 pages or keep a principle as the work's vote. And so we chose the latter of those two. And as you know, or as I've said a number of times about this, it is cancelable at any time at all. If the government wants...
How is he set up? Is he reporting to you alone or is he reporting to the board?
At the moment, he hasn't had an opportunity to do anything.
Oh.
Okay?
Yeah.
It's a work in progress. I am trying to bring him into contact with me to a potential person who might want to make a conservation easement. And that's the beginning of a long series of conversations with such people. The back and forth, it tends to get them to need more skilled advice from their lawyers or estate planners, and it becomes a tax issue. And neither John nor I are experts in giving that, and I wouldn't give it even if I were. But it's, we're there to start the ball rolling. But it's, we're there to start the ball rolling. And one of the first things that needs to be done is, they need to know the scope of what we're trying to get them to do. And then the next clear step is that they need to get a real estate appraisal done by a qualified appraiser of what they are talking about. And when that comes in, the land advisory committee will go out and take a look at it, see if it's of any interest to us, which I know it is. But they need to take a look at it and give another evaluation, which is another subject incidentally, because the form that they're using needs to be revised. But it's an iterative process, Bill. I think you've known this for a long time. It goes back and forth and back and forth, and there are just a hundred questions that you can never anticipate. And that's one of the reasons why the work scope for John Gatt is so loose.
Well, we'll certainly be interested, I don't know when the review to the routine reports as he's making progress, but I think there are the periods where he reports to the board of supervisors in his public meeting as to some of the things he's working on, the stats. Like to see that. We're paying him a very handsome cost per hour. And again, I think he's a qualified, very qualified individual to do just this. He's got to work with a lot of people. He's got to work with the EAC, with the LCAC, the other townships, the local land trusts, or there are several, and pull all this together in, I would hope, a broad scope of work and activity that has to be done.
You said it all.
Well, just one thing on that, pardon me. Will the township be getting their own appraisals? Or do we accept their appraisal?
We usually accept their appraisal. We usually accept their appraisal.
Well, how much would an appraisal cost from our end?
About twenty-five hundred dollars.
Don't you think that would be prudent?
I don't know yet, Joe.
Yeah, just as a guess.
We're looking at one now, and we have raised some red flag about it, we three members of the board of supervisors. And thus, for the first time in my recorded history looking into these sort of things, we are going to ask for another appraisal to be done for our purpose. We will pay for it.
Probably your appraisal or our appraisal?
Correct, yes.
Bill Shelton, a question on conservation easements, a discussion we had last month. Just a question to follow up from last month, not to get into the discussion again, but around trails. Could I get a copy of the township's written policy around requiring trails in conservation easements? We had quite a discussion about existing policies. I'll ask all three supervisors if you...
I can answer that. Bill, the policy as such, which I do not know that there was ever anything written in the Kent Township Land Trust, if such a policy exists, it's not available to us now, as you may know because the Kent Township Land Trust has moved out of the township and they are no longer a factor here at their requests or at their actions. So we don't really have anything that has to do with trails. The whole subject of trails boiled up furiously within Ralph Schmidt's easement. And I think that gave rise to a lot of, in some cases, emotional concerns. But it became quite clear that two things occurred that I never knew about before, and that is, a trail on a conservation easement is not required for IRS purposes. And secondly, the applicant Ralph Schmidt did not want a trail on his property. And that's how the planning was resolved. Okay?
I don't want to really go back to the discussion we had last month, only because it was very emotional and lacking more facts, but that's why I thought maybe if I could see a copy of the policy...
I don't have one yet.
Okay. But let me ask the other supervisor, to be sure. Bob, or Stutter, do you know of a written policy?
No. No?
The policy that I'm aware of is comprised of numerous commitments to open space, including trails, that have been discussed over the years, commitments to having those trails. So is there a formally written policy? It is our policy as far as? I'm not aware of one, so I'm only aware of it in terms of how it has played out in various other conservation easement transactions within the township.
Okay. Only that we had quite an extended discussion around policies.
We're continuing that discussion, that's right.
But I also know that, you know, that the township has authorized to create policies, and the sunshine law, which has been quoted, was mentioned several times in other meetings, requires deliberation and policymaking in open sessions and written minutes of such things. And so, we're really having a discussion around a practice or a commonly occurring event, but not really a policy.
Can you tell me what I just said? That's not what I said.
No, I'm not. I was asking a question, that's why I was trying to understand better.
Yes, it was my understanding that there has been a policy that we do this, and whether it's written down or whether it's oral, I don't know. I can't tell you that absolutely. But it's my understanding that this township has made commitment to supporting trails throughout the township because we have committed to putting trails throughout the township. And the only way you do it is if you put it in. So we've made commitments to trails in this township, to the best of my knowledge. And I've talked to various people that were here at other times, at various levels, that substantiate what I just said.
I agree with that also.
I'm sorry?
I agree with that also. If they practice on the township.
A simpler, though, question about following up what we said in the last month about this. Are there any plans to destroy or eliminate any existing trails?
You cannot do that, Bill. Those are legal documents that have been filed in Westchester. You can't change them.
Yes.
If the trail is called for as it is on my conservation easement, I can't change it and nobody else can.
Okay.
Yeah. Exactly.
I think, to clarify, a trail on Smith's property is not entirely dead. Either Ralph or someone that takes over the property and has a conservation easement can amend the conservation easement to include trails. So if the TLC or...
Incorrected, yes.
They could amend the easement to include a trail.
If the owner wanted it.
If the owner wanted, yeah, that's true.
And if the owner wants it, is it likely that the owner would expect compensation for that additional easement?
No idea.
For addition to the easement?
It may cause the landowner something, and the landowner receives, not in my case, but the landowner receives money from the township for that conservation easement. If he amends it and perhaps degrades the value of the conservation easement, one would wonder if there is not a refund to the township.
So there is a value to a...
It would have to be, the trail, if I wanted to, I'm sorry, if Ralph Schmidt wanted a trail on his property, I assume he would have to get meets and bounds engineered. It would be a portion of the conservation easement that would be impaired, and whatever would be the fallout from that, I'm not really, I haven't even thought about that. I see your point.
Okay.
Whatever.
Okay, Tom?
My conservation easement or your conservation easement, we did not receive any money from the township. For some reason, people think that whenever you get a conservation easement, you get money. That's not...
Not at all.
Not the case in all cases.
No, not at all. Matt?
Which is a different topic. Limestone Ridge. I have, as you know, written the board several letters about limestone ridge and conditionally used hearing. In my last letter, I directly asked for an independent legal review of the hearing and what transpired. And I got communication from Lisa last week that the board supervisors agreed with that and would be engaging an attorney to review the hearing. And I want to thank you for taking that action. I think that will be the benefit of the township in the long run, however it turns out. I did want to ask you, you were talking about scope and another topic, and I was wondering if you had considered the charge to the attorney who was going to be looking at this and what the scope of that charge would be. It's going to be very general, very specific, or have you not considered that yet?
I don't think we've considered that, have we?
Well, the scope is going to be to address all the concerns in your letter.
Yeah. Your letter was what you said.
Yeah.
And I have provided you with all the documentation from the hearing.
That covers it all.
Fifty years.
Can I ask a follow up on that? I think it was in July, the supervisors meeting, I was here, and I asked about the status of an ordinance that was discussed last year regarding high density housing and its regulation. And I think the chief recalled, well, that was in relation to being able to regulate apartments as they come in. And I was wondering if that ordinance has been dusted off or reinvigorated at all, or if there's plans to do that in the future work session.
I think the PC would do it first if we did it.
Okay.
Put it back to you.
Yeah. Oh, I'm not on the PC for this one, but I will ask our chair to...
That's it.
To inquire about it. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All right.
Okay, Lou Alfonso, again.
Okay, Lou.
Again, all right. I'm still Lou. I've been fifty years. But I'm a relatively recent resident of the township. And I can't go shopping in the township. I've got to leave the township to buy groceries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, sort of. Giant's heart, man, sounds like.
Yeah, the tail of the giant. Like that really counts. Like that really counts. That doesn't really count.
What is your line?
My point is, we have a lot of open land here that is designated for light industry and things of that sort. Some of that property possibly could be used to invite retail to come in and build, I don't care whether it's a Costco or whether it's another giant or whatever, or a string of stores, that's in the township that the township itself might benefit from in a way of taxes, et cetera, et cetera.
You're not, you're not piling any new ground. You're not the first who observed this. You probably observed it, observed it before you bought your house here.
I did not.
Well...
I observed it about, within the past month when I was looking at his home.
Okay. We have places, not lots and lots of wide open spaces for it, but we do have spaces, and I'll call your attention to someplace called Way's Lane.
Yes.
All right? And that's been a lot, a lot of money has been spent on developing plans for that, and that's been done for, what was the date of the last big effort? We got, that's been at least six years.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three, okay, that's...
Yeah, Way's Lane is a private road.
Well...
That's beside the point. That's whatever.
Very much beside the point. There is no will to develop it.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Now, if you want to have a mission...
I don't have the funds to do it if I want to.
Well, just so you know, the supervisors are going to meet with someone who is working on a wait, on Route One corridor study, and the supervisors are going to meet with him to discuss their ideas for Way's Lane.
Uh-huh.
And see what they can do. And the other point on that, Way's Lane is being paved.
Last I heard...
By all the residents.
No, last I heard, the owners of Way's Lane...
There are no owners of Way's Lane.
The residents, the longer, or the property owners, the longer, have decided not to repave it. I'm a member of the Italian American Club, and I found that out from them.
Well, they just came in for a permit to pave it.
Ah!
So they're paving it.
Good!
And they don't need a permit.
Surprise, surprise.
I guess the concrete, Roger, is that correct? The concrete company's taking the initiative?
That's what the PA One came in as, and they came in for a permit.
Yeah.
Works back...
It's being paved all the way down to Yona.
All the way from...
From the Italian American Club down.
From Cyprus.
Wow.
From Cyprus.
You don't have the resources to develop it yourself. I would charge you that if you had the ability to reach out to those who have that ability, having an anchor store in the development might help a great deal to be able to encourage people to confront how to upgrade and improve that stretch of township property.
I agree.
So finding the right person is...
That's a job.
Is the challenge, and that's part of the reason why we're going to be talking with the head person, I suppose you call him, Graebus, with the Route One, the Holloman effort. And he's not the only one. So if we can find the right person, then we can...
I wish I could, but I'll almost seven years, I don't have the strength. I mean...
That's a...
I'd like to comment, you know, the planning commission is in the process of updating the comprehensive plan for township, which we do every ten years. We'll, we're six months into it. We'll finish in a year and a half or so.
Whatever.
Why don't you come the second Tuesday? We have a work session.
This planning session, right.
No, no, that's our work session.
That's the work session.
And you can, you can promote more shopping centers or what I, I'm not quite sure what...
Well, the thing is, I, I am a retired federal employee. I have no business interest in any of this.
Yeah, but you seem as a resident, you...
As a resident, yeah, you know, why do I have to leave my township in order to buy groceries? I mean, for me, it's the Coney Gardens, it's right around the corner anyway. It's a...
Yeah, I think you can walk to a shopping center.
Just about, just about. But to have no shopping center in my township...
I just want that Menon Hall station as a shopping center.
That's right.
Yeah, there you go.
And you proved that, ten years deliberation.
One more comment, Joe?
Yeah. Couple weeks ago, Bob Hamper's picture was in the Kent paper with the purification award, you know, for the Baltimore Pike flower, beautiful flower display. And I know Matt Saban was a large impetus behind that. Is, has it been funding? It's full of weeds now. And, you know, with the mushroom festival, there's a hundred thousand people that drove past it. Is there money or who's going to maintain that?
I'm happy to address anything. We have instituted a fundraising drive for that. The township has made, places make a contribution towards our effort. We've also got a, gotten a donation, an actual cash donation from Marriott. We're in discussions with Exelon and several other large retailers. We got rejected by many smaller retailers. But we are trying to raise money to maintain that. And yes, it is, what we end up doing every year is, after the bloom, is to go in and treat the area with herbicides and try to kill whatever weeds were in there, and then mulch it in the springtime so that it will at least try to come up as well as possible. But right now, maintenance is being done by EAC, Lions Club, and other volunteer organizations. We're trying to raise money to make that more...
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, you know, to put a good face on kind of township.
Well, it used to be an area full of weeds that didn't have any flowers. At least a little better than it was.
Oh, it's a heck of a lot better. I say that very strongly because it received national attention. You people who have spearheaded the effort deserve, accolades can possibly be awarded. We know that there's an expansion idea to be put forward, and if we can endorse that in any way, yeah, we will pledge money for it. That's worth it. Okay.
Cindy Falcon, Kent Township. While we're on thank yous, I want to thank Chief McCarthy for putting the speed tracker on Byard Road since our last meeting, and I noticed that it's now on Still's Mill Road. Thank you. I'm sure it's, does the, does that machine collect and keep data, and if so, can we see it?
No, it doesn't. It's only speed, they were bought, Tom Neil and I were in Kent Square, they're probably
Square. They're probably twenty years old, aren't they, Roger? But they work very well.
Yes, they have two.
The Borough has one. If you want a speed count, we have data that we collect regularly on the road stretch attached it.
And there's a little tube that go across the road?
So whatever you're looking for, let me know and I'll give you the information.
Right. Because, I mean, I, I know that the speed thing has been up there. And, you know, we stand up there at seven thirty in the morning while my son gets on the bus and watch people fly by at forty, forty-five miles an hour. So, you know, I'm just, and I know, you know, as you said, you can't be everywhere. But if the sign itself is not deterring people, what's the next step? Also, while you're on the road, I don't think that our road has been repaved there in that section.
Which road is that?
Byard Road. And at one time, there were reflectors in the middle of the road, particularly on the dangerous curve there coming up to Sills Mill Road, which I think because people are going at such speed and pass over that center line with such frequency, got knocked out fairly quickly. They're certainly not good now.
I do.
So I'm just wondering if there's any plan to, you know, put those back up maybe as a, as an opportunity to make people pay a little more attention or make that curve a little bit safer. And whether there's any, whether there's any plans other than just putting up this, this speed limit thing to, to address the-
You want to try that, Roger, or not?
The reflectors that go in the road with the trial, they're a stick one. And no, we can't keep them in the road because the traffic keeps knocking them out.
We, to address two other things, we wanted to have that road, the rumble strip put down the middle. That road is not wide enough for state standards. And if we do it, reliable for anybody that runs off the road trying to avoid it. So, yeah, lineability comes into everything. So what I want to tell you is I've had Parksburg with me, I think, five, six days now.
We've seen him.
Because he's concentrating on just the speed and I'm doing everything else. He's, and believe it or not, resident.
He has pulled over so many people.
Yes.
That I've been yelled at quite often.
For no good reason.
People that have been pulled over in the speed zone going, you know, forty and fifteen have come in here and screamed at me about it because they don't, they live here, but they don't know it's a pull zone.
One guy on his own street, he's doing it over sixty miles an hour, on his own street.
So a lot of people have, I mean, people are happy, some people are happy that they're pulling over. And he's been right in case it's left and right.
Good. Well, and, you know, this may be something to put in the newsletter as well, to make the other residents aware that there is an increased focus, perhaps?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do. Between what he's writing and what I'm writing, the interesting ones I have on Hillendale are parents with their children made for school.
Yep.
That's the first thing to take.
And has he been sitting on Byard Road near Brier Estates?
Yes, right there at Brier Estates.
We've seen him, we've seen Parksburg there.
That's my favorite spot, too. But you don't do that with speeds board. But I will tell you this, watch the speed board, because when the cars are going away from the speed board, they'll give you a false reading. But it's got to be when they're going to.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
God. I'd like to congratulate the board. I think you had a meeting, were you all above three oh?
We have to stop doing that, everybody.
They've had a nice weekend. You should end it.
The man is working on time regardless.
We'll end this immediately, Joe. Is there a second to that?
Pay your bills.
You have, I don't have a second yet.
Second.
Okay, November? Bye. Okay, we pay bills.